Councilman Joe Buscaino spills the beans on some exciting developments coming to the Harbor area.
Get set for an all-new LA waterfront. A pumped San Pedro Councilman Joe Buscaino gives us a preview at his State of the District speech.
We will see new restaurants, new bars, new shops, new entertainment, and new opportunities for the business community. Downtown San Pedro will feel more like the thriving Gaslap District in San Diego.
Now, one of the highlights of the councilman's speech was his plans for the upcoming San Pedro Public Market. I'm standing on the future site right now. Many of us already knew of the restaurants and other businesses on the way, but did you know a 5,000-seat outdoor auditorium is coming too? It is coming in the year 2021.
So imagine the Greek theater on the water, and we're so proud to be leading that effort.
Plans also call for moving the USS Iowa Museum right next to the new marketplace and amphitheater when they open in two years. And close by will be a new boutique hotel with rooftop bar located next to the Warner Grand Theater.
We will see all of our offerings being connected, creating a truly unique destination for the state of California.
Construction is also expected to begin this summer on the Wilmington Waterfront Promenade. Amidst all this, the councilman says he is committed to building more housing. That includes bridge and supportive housing for people facing homelessness.
And while we're close to meeting our share in our district, we have to build much more. Supportive housing being built today is modern, as you see before you. It's beautiful. It adds value to the neighborhood. We will make a city where everyone thrives. Thank you so much for being here, and let's get back to work. Thank you.
Since taking office over seven years ago, Councilman Buscaino says his district has gained 4,000 new jobs. Women and their children who are experiencing homelessness will soon have a place to call home. Casa Azul, a bridge housing facility, will not only offer a safe place to sleep, but will also add a touch of Spanish culture as well.
We all know that the best way to end homelessness is with homes.
We are at the opening of Casa Azul. Casa Azul is the third bridge housing that the city's opening.
It's for women and their children modeled on Casa Azul, which was, of course, the famous home of Diego Rivera and Frida Kahlo.
It is an honor to have created this mural for the women and children that will be here, and I'm hoping through the colors and the visual of the mural, it will bring some joy and peace to the women that are here.
There's so many good people here that care about every single solitary soul.
My staff was saying, "They're not going to want to leave because it's so nice." I said, "No, they're going to want to leave, but they're going to go to someplace that's equally nice. They're going to want to live in a place that brings them art and culture and inspiration."
This would be a gorgeous apartment building, let alone a shelter.
It says to them, "We care about you."
The Casa Azul has given them a chance to create a new life.
We've set a new standard for how we look at and treat people at a moment of crisis.
And even more uplifting art is being added to another housing facility as a local artist creates a mural with personal messages from those living on the streets.
Murals are a beloved art form in LA. So we chose to communicate the letters and the messages from our homeless friends and neighbors. We chose that art form to communicate their need for supportive housing in the city of LA.
This is the mother who's out here on the mural. And Erin, I love meeting you, ma'am. I see the face of our city in you. I see the face of our future in you, and I see the hope of Los Angeles in you.
The murals are basically letting people know that we, as a unit and as a community, can actually help improve homelessness.
We've actually completely disrupted the system. So we're building permanent supportive housing using upcycled storage containers, and we're doing it in a quarter of the time and at a quarter of the cost of the traditional affordable housing developers.
Quarter of the time, quarter of the cost. That sounds pretty good, all the way around.
We're going to cut the homeless population in Los Angeles almost in half by the time the Olympics get here in 2028.
And our goal is to build over 400 developments over the next nine years.
You're the start of a community that we're going to build in LA to fight the [BLEEP] out of homelessness.
I'm glad, no, I'm not the only person who drops an F-bomb occasionally in front of the cameras.
Get your smartphones out and hurry. You only have until May 19th to check out the latest downtown pop-up gallery, and it's all about the dollar signs.
Pop-up galleries in downtown Los Angeles seem to be all the rage these days, but this is the first one we know of dedicated to money-making, specifically women's financial literacy. Welcome to Stack's House.
It is an 11,000-square-foot massive, beautiful experience. Each room designed to educate you and empower you around a financial topic, not just taking amazing photographs for the Instagram, but also learning a thing or two.
Award-winning finance expert and co-founder Farnoosh Tarabi takes us on a tour of her Instagrammable Stack's House Museum. Round one in our visit: the debt boxing gym.
Student loans, credit cards, medical bills. So this is a room where we can really let out all the aggression that we harbor when it comes to having debt. We have gloves you can put on. People love to take photographs with the gloves on, get in the boxing gym, and just show that they can overcome this.
And after a workout, it's shower time.
You have to rinse off, right? So this is one of our popular installations. People love to take really good close-ups of this looking like they're showering in money. This whole experience is about bringing our money emotions to life and also giving people the tools, the education, the experiences to get in the right money mindset, because managing your money is part math, but it's also part mindset. We have a bunch of tips on how to approach investing. So this build protection in your portfolio with cash investments and bonds. It's kind of a surprise. It's a surprise and delight moment, you know? Don't try to predict market highs and lows.
And if you're going to invest in the stock market, Tarabi says, "Take the reins and ride it out," the lesson behind her rodeo room.
A lot of us get nervous about the ups and downs in the stock market, and, you know, it's important to hold on because compound interest adds up. The market's going to do its thing, but if you have a long-term goal, 25 years, 30 years, to retire with money in the bank, it's important to not give up along the way. So it's your birthday, Gil. What do you want for your birthday?
$100,000.
Yes. You need to ask for the money, or else you're going to get another candle that you don't want.
So you're saying the most successful people ask for it?
They ask for it. They're not intimidated to talk about it. They, whether it's asking for a raise or asking your friend for money back, you know, we need to get comfortable talking about these things and be our biggest financial advocates.
Tarabi says these tips work for everyone, but are especially geared towards women in her museum because of the income gap between the sexes. Tarabi says that may be changing soon.
Over the next decade, there's going to be a massive transference of wealth in this country from the old generation to the current generation, trillions of dollars, and women are going to be on the majority receiving end of that. So we're going to be inheriting a lot of money, and we want to be prepared for that, to be able to make the smartest money moves that we know.
We're both graduating from UCLA next month, which is exciting, but also a scary time, you know, going into the real world. Learning about finances is definitely something that's important, and there's not really anything that's really geared towards women in finances. So we thought this event and this place was just a super great place.
It's so money. Visit Stack's House at 2018 East 7th Street in downtown's colorful arts district.
The museum is open Wednesday through Sunday. While his term as mayor has long ended, but former Mayor Richard Reardon continues to support and give back to his community. His latest effort seeks to help empower the lives of all LA children. Rasha Goel has more.
Former LA Mayor Richard Reardon and his wife Elizabeth recently made a donation to the Library Foundation for the Los Angeles Public Library's Live Homework Help Program. For him, it's about making a difference.
It means that my library, the Richard Reardon Los Angeles Library, is able to help every child in this world to learn.
What we really want to do is make this library something that all the children can use, and Ken has initiated so many terrific programs, and we're so proud to be able to help those programs.
The Live Homework Help Program is a signature program that provides students with free tutoring online.
You can do it from your phone. You can do it on a computer. You can do it in the library. You can do it at home, and you are talking to a professional. There are no volunteers in this. It's a tutor, and they can save your homework online.
Tutors can help with many subjects, and all you need is a library card.
It could be a poem. It could be a book report you have to write. It's in English, in science, in social studies. The tutors are Spanish-speaking as well as English-speaking.
What a beautiful gift. In fact, Richard Reardon made the donation on the day of his 89th birthday. And for those of you who may have not known, the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles was actually named after him in 2001.
I loved the library. From when I was a young lawyer in 1956, I used to sneak out at lunch, break into where nobody else was here, and I'd sneak in and spend my whole lunchtime looking through books and tapes and everything here in this library.
Throughout his term and afterwards, Reardon has been committed to helping the library.
Mayor Reardon, during his tenure, presided over our branch construction program, the nation's largest library infrastructure project, which rebuilt and expanded our system from 63 libraries to 73 libraries. He spearheaded the city's Millennium fundraiser that raised $2 million for library reading programs for children, and he initiated Read to Me LA, an innovative early literacy program for young people.
And today, Richard Reardon continues to leave a mark in his legacy as he helps the people of the city.
The Live Homework Help Program has been around for 10 years and can be found online at lapl.org/online-tutor. Well, it's a way to connect small business owners with valuable city resources. The mayor's Small Business Summit offered networking opportunities and information to help grow local businesses.
We're at the Mayor's Small Business Summit, and I'm here to see all the opportunities that I can get through the city of LA and meet with other entrepreneurs like myself.
We're here to find great small businesses, diverse businesses that represent our city, that can support us and work together, grow together.
See, great events again, resources for the current year, moving forward to see what the city of Los Angeles is providing as far as loans, lending, and things of that nature. Get to meet people face-to-face and, you know, talk to them, get them information, see what they're looking for. So it's great. It's a great thing to gather information.
It's a great opportunity. I believe there's over 1,000 small businesses that walk through these doors for us to get to know new businesses, ones that are emerging, and reconnect with other businesses that we've worked with in the past and keep growing those relationships.
The city has certain contracts they're doing with a lot of developments in Los Angeles. This event is great to get information regarding that.
When you're running a small business, you're usually just in your business every day, trying to develop, trying to make yourself and your business better, and you don't really get a chance to see what else is out there, what other opportunities are out there, and how other people are running their own businesses. And it's always nice to see people that are in the same boat that you're in and get that
Do you wish there were more trees in our city? Well, that was the topic at a recent tree summit where environmental experts talked climate change and why we need more trees in LA.
Today is the first inaugural tree summit in Los Angeles. Mayor Garcetti wanted to bring experts from across the country, from the city, community members, advocates of the environment, advocates of trees, experts, arborists, to come together and really chart forward the path for making the city sustainable, resilient, and to protect and preserve and plant more trees across our city.
Spent by FEMA in the last two years as much as we spent in the last 27 years in this nation. So climate change is real. It's costing us.
In next 20 to 40 years, it's projected that days with 95 degrees or more are going to double or triple in Los Angeles. So it's going to be hot in Los Angeles. So what we want to do is plant more trees, provide more shade, really provide some space for people to walk from their home to the school, to the grocery store, and not be hit by the sun. It's a safety issue. It's a well-being issue, and we are really working hard to cool this city.
The LA Conservation Corps transforms lives and enhances communities by educating, training, and putting at-risk youth to work. Every year, luncheon is held to recognize their work and accomplishments.
Today, we're celebrating the Conservation Corps, the LA Conservation Corps, our core members, and this year's cohort of Russell Cantor Fund awardees.
While there are so many amazing groups in Los Angeles, a few impress me as much as the LA Corps. These young people, day in and day out, take to the streets of Los Angeles, picking up trash, cleaning up alleys, and making our city shine.
Faith, as we all know, without action means nothing, and LACC is the action of the faith that we have, for this earth and for our people, for the students that we celebrate here, who reflect our city.
The LA Conservation Corps is everywhere. We're providing opportunities. We're helping transform youth through the transformation of themselves, and we are here to keep this city clean and green and healthy so that all of us here can thrive.
Just like a mom, the Corps gives, gives, and gives. Just like a mom, the Corps pushes you, helps you, and supports you. Just like a mom, the Corps only wants the best for you.
In times when it's difficult to be optimistic about our future, these young people exude hope and speak to the power of possibilities.
The city attorney files suit against TurboTax and H&R Block over deceptive practices. Lake Balboa is a lot cleaner thanks to a group of neighbors, and it's time once again for LA Sanitation's Open House. All this in City B. City Attorney Mike Fuhr has filed lawsuits against Intuit Inc., the maker of TurboTax, H&R Block Inc., and HRB Digital alleging unfair and deceptive practices in connection with their free online tax preparation services for low-income filers. The city attorney's lawsuits allege that Intuit and H&R Block aggressively market inferior alternative free tax preparation products on their websites, which are useless to all but those with the simplest of tax returns. LA Sanitation and Environment will host its annual 2019 Open Houses at each of its six district yards in Sun Valley, Northridge, Lincoln Heights, South Los Angeles, San Pedro, and West Los Angeles in a series of free Saturday events through June 29th. Residents are invited to get an exclusive up-close encounter with LA Sanitation truck fleet. For details, visit lacitysan.org. Folks living near Lake Balboa came out to clean their community. Participants picked up trash and debris. They say they liked to do their part to help keep their community clean.
One of the components that we're working on today is revitalizing public space where people connect.
In celebration of LAPD turning 150, the Hollywood Station held a party to commemorate the milestone.
This is a big open house here in Hollywood at the Los Angeles Police Department Hollywood Division, celebrating 150 years of the LAPD.
We have the community. We have citizens that live in Hollywood, outside of Hollywood, business owners, politicians. Everyone that is part of the Hollywood community has been invited to talk with the officers, to visit the station, to celebrate the historic background of Hollywood Police Department.
I've always found the officers here in Hollywood to be extremely friendly and outgoing and wanting to know what's going on in the neighborhood.
There's all sorts of fun things, delicious food, performances by local children's groups, and of course, in celebration of public safety and the 300 men and women who serve Hollywood in the Los Angeles Police Department.
I'm always kind of thrilled at the comfort and the support that I see from the community for the police and vice versa.
Celebrate the stories and experiences of Little Tokyo. Join a 5K family walk-run to help end homelessness. And do you love fresh strawberries? There'll be plenty of them at a local strawberry festival. All this in Things to Do. Looking for a live show in Little Tokyo? Then be sure to check out Unheard LA, the latest installment in the Oral History Series by KPCC in person. Unheard LA is a celebration of the stories and experiences that give shape to Los Angeles and its distinctive, unique neighborhoods. Don't miss Unheard LA, live in Little Tokyo, Sunday, May 19th, beginning at 5:30 PM. The show will take place at the Aratani Japan-America Theater at 244 South San Pedro Street. For tickets, visit kpcc.ticketleap.com. Come join the United Way, the LA Rams, and city and county leaders for Homewalk 2019. Now in its 11th year, this 5K run-walk event has advocates and Angelenos joining forces to help end homelessness. It's a feel-good cause the entire family can share, so be sure to check out Homewalk 2019, happening Saturday, May 18th, at Grand Park on 200 North Grand Avenue. To register, visit homewalkla.org. Love fresh strawberries? Food trucks? Live music? Then the Strawberry Festival at UCLA Farmers Market has your name all over it. Enjoy strawberry delicacies or take a field trip to Ayala Farms, where you can do your own strawberry pickin'. Have yourself a fresh experience at the Strawberry Festival at the UCLA Farmers Market, happening Saturday, May 18th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Bruins Plaza. For details, visit castrawberryfestival.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. If you please, shhhhh. If you please take a seat. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May 14th. Welcome to City Hall. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayeno, Cidio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Cory, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, and Wesson. Ten members present, or excuse me, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Smith moves, and Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Corretts moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, we'll be led today. Mr. Smith, what about you leading us in our flag salute? All rise. All rise for the salute of our flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very honored. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Mr. President, there have been requests to continue items 15, 23, and 25 to May 28, and item 1 to May 21st.
Okay, so ordered, continue.
Items 2 and 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on both.
Okay, let's move on.
Items 4 through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, for now, let's hold items 6, 8, and 12. And let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Are we're having technical difficulties?
Okay, 11 ayes.
Okay, so we got it going. All right, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Thank you.
That brings us to items 13 through 42. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, cards on items 21, 27, 28, 31, 34, 35, 37, 38, and 40.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. If you would please open the roll. We all right? Okay, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been requests to send items 19, 20, and 33 forthwith.
Okay, so ordered. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, let me, Ms. McAllister. No, in fact, let's go Ms. McAllister. Okay, Ms. McAllister? Patricia, you here? I thought, oh, I see you. Okay, you have items 2, 3, 37, 40, and your general public comment.
Okay, good morning, Mr. President. I'm going to talk about items 1, and that's the liens.
It was continued, Ms. McAllister, so move on to another item.
All item 1s were?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let's talk about 37. Item 37 here, you want additional money for local neighborhood programs, services and needs in Council District 15. And you want to transfer an unallocated balance in the General City Purpose Fund. And you want to transfer that to this local neighborhood program. There's no dollar amount here. It could be 5 million. We don't know what it is. It doesn't say what programs. And I'm seeing, I studied accounting. People used to ask me, what took me so long to graduate from university? I was taking courses I didn't even need to graduate. I love knowledge. You have no, these funds, I've been noticing these different funds for the last three, four years. You're creating all these funds, it keeps it very difficult for people to keep track of where this money is going and coming from. And here, you're transferring the fund from one, the General City Purpose Fund, to a CD Community Service Fund, Council Fee Subsidy Fund, hundreds of funds. I found the funds. Hundreds. And here, I, we need to be clear on this. We need to know where the money is going and how much. And if you approve number 37, I know that corruption is rampant in this district, on this council. And I'm asking you, Mr. President, to please do that. Number 40, here, I want to talk about, again, these funds. You want to transfer 126,000 from the Measure M Local Return. Now, one thing I don't like about these funds, you're taking money from programs you shouldn't be taking them from, like the, for instance, the Housing Fund. You're taking money from housing and putting it into other things, like the streets and things like that, and that's what people don't notice. See, I keep track of this. We need to allocate this money where it goes. That's why we have people laying on the street all over this city. Okay? Because you're not allocating the money. Now, I'm glad that we have a black man on the Finance Committee, Mr. Price, but there are items for money that shouldn't even be coming out of the department, let alone going to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee is approving it. I'm going to ask for sanctions against the Finance Committee, because once you bring it here, all of you vote on it. Once the Finance Committee brings these budgets items here, budget items here, you vote on them. I've never heard you say, oh, no, we're not going to vote on this. Let's discuss this. So we need to hold this Finance Committee accountable. They're the ones who are wrecking this city. Now, the departments, they wouldn't be doing what they're doing, sending all these ridiculous items, if they weren't given the approval. And this is what I'm seeing, Mr. President, based on my knowledge.
Thank you. Let's give her her one minute for general.
Okay. We're still in court with the Los Angeles Unified School District, Public Agency Retirement System, and CalSTRS. CalSTRS is coming up. Here's the deal. This is still going on, this embezzlement of teacher retirement funds. And I'm talking to the union right now. Yes, the union. And if they don't come aboard, I'm going to bust them wide open. Okay? When I say that, I'm going to expose them, because I'm getting complaints from teachers that unions, this union, UTLA, is not representing them. When I was a teacher and I had my incident, I paid thousands of dollars. You know, when I called them about that incident, they told me, we can't do nothing for you, hung up on me. I should have took them to court, but that's okay. I'm coming after them now. Because teachers, when they retire, they should not be denied their retirement benefits, and I have proof that hundreds of, that millions are being embezzled. Now, why can't we get lawyers to take this case? Because this money has been spread out in a lot of different industries, including the laws, the law industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, if you please come forward, Mr. Eric Previn. Items 2, 3, 21, 27, 28, 31, 34, 35, and 38.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I can't tell you how happy I am to have the volunteers from the library down here. It's very exciting to have that group down here, because we, as you know, are very engaged with our library in Studio City at the branch. So thank you so much for bringing them down. Under the category of politics, I guess it's thanks to David Rue, who's rolling out some Conservation Corps work. I love the Conservation Corps, it's just that during election time, they only invite the one they like, and even if you're green, they don't care. So that's a bit of a weird detail, but we like the work they do, and they hire some young people and get them going, so we appreciate that. Now, the charter bus program in your district, similarly, 50 grand. We don't know exactly what that's for, but I assume it's not for taking people out to Morongo, but more like schools on field trips and stuff like that. But nonetheless, I think it's great that you're providing charter bus service to the folks who vote for you, sir, if that's what's going on. I'm not 100% sure. And then finally, thanks to Rodriguez for connecting with the registrar recorder about using an auditorium on the EE fight that I know you're going to be duking it out very, very soon. As for 2 and 3, number 2 and number 3 would be the liquor license items. Now, just to be 100% clear, 1 is in my district. I'm trying to stay calm, because it's just about a half mile from where we just jacked up some of the speed limits. Now, this one is a gamer facility. I guess Caro likes that idea, where they're gaming, drinking, and then driving. Worries me a little bit because of the testosterone-fueled activity, you know, it looks like fun at night, but it's not fun when some guy peels off because he lost at, you know, Pokemon or whatever. I don't know. I just hope that, because I know you know, sir, the other one is in Rodriguez's district over on Lakeview Farmer. They want a cash-and-carry program. Again, you know, we got to make alcohol available. Let's be 100% clear. But drunk driving is going up, 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 especially out in Blumenfield's district and Greg Smith's district. Anywhere where you got a big valley road at night without lighting, people are getting killed. So it's a very, very sort of upsetting thing. And I'd like to thank, I guess, he's not here, but O'Farrell today for honoring one of the great animal rights activists, not Paul Corretts, who we all, we had that little honor for Corretts the other day, for all of his activity. But this one is for Seth MacFarlane. Now, this guy, to put it in the nicest terms, is loaded, I believe is how we say it. But he's also a great genius, so we really admire his work. I mean, family guy, many of our kids and even I grew up, you know, laughing out loud about the work of this man. So I think it's nice that he's getting a Walk of Shame, a Walk on the Hall of Fame. So that is, that is very, very nice. Now, in terms of item number 30, it's not 39, 10, Track and Trace. You guys have a close session practice that I'm going to get to in a minute, but.
Mr. Previn, that item is not available for public comment. It's already been voted on.
I'm tracking it very closely. I thought it is.
Mr. Previn, you know item 10 was not one of the numbers. So go on to another one.
Well, there it is. I've stopped then at a, at a point where I have to say, I'm ready for my general public comment, if you are, sir.
Okay, let's give him his general public comment.
So, good to see Weezer back. The ACLU sued the city, the county, everybody, over scanner data. Now, I was very curious about that. You settled, and then it comes up that today, over at the county, they're going to settle. I believe, and I'll have to get this clarified, 337,005 at the city, 337,500 at the county. That's 675, check me on that, Blumenfield. That's a lot to the ACLU, who look after the rights. So they don't need the money, because they raised a ton of money this year and last year, thanks to Trump, because they are really concerned, understandably. So the idea that they would make a deal with these two groups, who are busy squashing the rights a little bit, is weird, because you'd think that they'd say, hold off, we won't settle until we get a little injunctive relief. Now, Bonin can explain what injunctive relief is. It's what happens every single time when Carol Sobel comes, where she makes you stop doing bad stuff. But the ACLU has taken the money and leaving the people outside. Now, I don't know. I like the ACLU, because I'm a rights guy, but I do wonder about that, and I'll be going over to the county to make sure that we're all clear and on the same page. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Madam City Attorney and Mr. Clerk, that concludes multi-comment for today. Let's now do a vote on items 2, 3, 21, and 27. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send item 21 forthwith.
So ordered. Now, let's do items 28, 31, 34, and 35. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
We'll move on to items 37, 38, and 40. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, on 37, forthwith. Now. Okay, Mr. Smith, I'm going to bring up items 6 and 8 at this point. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Buscayeno? For your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Come on up, John Long. You know, as the song goes from Peaches and Herbs, it's reunited and it feels so good. What you have here, Mr. President and colleagues, is a dear friend, a partner for many years when I was with LAPD. And also joining us are a number of his former partners from the Community Affairs Group, who I'll soon introduce, who worked under the chief's office to promote community safety programming and community relations and community policing initiatives for the Los Angeles Police Department. But today, we are honoring John Long, who has dedicated his life to the betterment of the city of Los Angeles and has spent the past 17 years protecting one of our greatest assets, Los Angeles World Airport, working for the Bomb Detection K-9 Unit. Thank you. John Long was born in Chula Vista, but moved to Kansas, and he was so proud of it, and he reminded us that, right? And lived there through high school. He joined the Kansas Army National Guard as a military police officer and later joined the U.S. Marine Corps. In 1988, after a big move back to California, he began what would become a long and successful career with the world's finest police department, LAPD. He started as a patrol officer and would continue to do so for 11 years at Hollenbeck, 77th, Pacific Southwest, and Hollywood areas. And in 1996, Officer John Long was promoted to Police Officer III, where he worked both patrol and footbeat. And in 1999, this sounds like a funeral, John. He's like in adjourning motion here. He was, he was promoted and transferred to the Office of Chief of Police, Community Affairs Group, as I mentioned, where he worked public affairs. And in this position, he would be known for his involvement in the community and for playing a vital role in success of events such as Memorial Foundation Annual Golf Tournament and the Beat publication. In 2002, Officer John Long was promoted yet again to the Bomb Detection K-9 Handler at our L.A. World Airport, where he would become the second-longest-tenured bomb-detection K-9 handler in LAPD's history. He received national recognition for his expertise in bomb detection and was therefore assigned to the 2008 DNC in Denver and the 2016 Republican National Convention in Cleveland. Was Don Danko with you at that one?
No.
Oh, okay. Additionally, he has and will continue to be a part of the executive protection team for the Los Angeles Clippers and L.A. Rams. And, Mr. President, if you need John Long, he's available for you too, sir. Now, throughout his career, Officer Long Now, throughout his career, Officer Long has received over a hundred-and-twenty-five LAPD commendations, not only for his advanced training ability, but his commitment to leadership, professionalism, work ethic, and teamwork. And as I mentioned, I had the pleasure to work alongside John as my partner, assigned to the Community Affairs Group. And here, we made incredible relationships, long-lasting friendships with partners who I'll soon introduce. But I knew, when I was working with John, in fact, he introduced me to what we know today as country music. He would not give me a chance to turn the station when we worked together. It was solely country music. But when, it was there, when we worked together, that John's dream in the police department was to serve as a K-9 bomb detection handler. And he worked so hard. I remember him studying and getting ready for his interviews and testing, and he finally got to the place where, looking back now after so many years, was his dream position and assignment. So, John, we are so proud of you. We honor you today for your years of service to the LAPD. I do also want to recognize his wife, Ivanya, who's here, who has shared these days and years with John as a police officer. And as we know, we've celebrated this year a hundred-and-fifty years of the LAPD. And we were here together a couple of months ago, celebrating a hundred-and-fifty years. It's the spouses that we cannot forget, of the long hours, the late nights, the early mornings, and for some spouses, that call, that dreaded call, that your loved one is not coming home. So, Ivanya, we thank you for sharing, for John with us. He's also joined by his son, Kyle, Officer Kyle Long, from the great city of Inglewood. Thank you, Kyle, for joining us. His son Zachary couldn't be with us today, and of course, past colleagues who's here, Lieutenant Anita McEwen, Sergeant Rudy Lopez, retired PSR Stephanie Nelson, retired PSR Don Danko, retired, retired, right, Steve? Retired management analyst Steve Rifele and retired management analyst Debbie Vernacci. And also his partners, Sergeant Nuno and Officer Scott Shuby, who's also here. But one person I wanted to bring up is a CBS Bold and Beautiful Soap Opera star, Don DiAmont. Don, come on up to say a few words. Now, Don, as you may have heard, is one of People Magazine's fifty most beautiful people in the world. And actually, John Long was just named that for the following year, so congratulations, John. So, help me welcome, and these are the relationships that we're over, like, looking back seventeen years, in support of our police Memorial Foundation, who, if you don't know, raises millions of dollars over the years for the children and wives of those who, and spouses, rather, of those who were killed or lost in the line of duty. So, you see here, an individual in Don DiAmont, who has committed a lifelong to support the foundation and everything LAPD. So, help me welcome and help me roast John, Don DiAmont, say a few words.
Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome.
That was a heck of a eulogy, a tribute, tribute. We do go back a long.
Long ways.
A long, long ways.
Twenty-plus, twenty-five years.
I was trying to figure that out on the way. It's at least that, right? But you've aged a little better than I have. Well, you know. I will be brief. Councilman, you illustrated John's legacy brilliantly. And you've been a friend for a very long time, an incredible father, incredible husband. And you have represented the very best of the Los Angeles Police Department. So, I am really honored to be here today. Congratulations.
Thanks, Don.
Good surprise.
Yeah, he didn't see this one coming. Thanks, Don, for your words. Also, I want to recognize John's current partner, who's also retiring, Officer John Borquez, who is retiring, and want to give a moment to thank him for his years of service to the LAPD and the Bomb Detection K-9 Unit. So, with that, we, colleagues, we're losing a good one here before you, in Officer John Long. And by the way, I've been following his Facebook page. He has been counting down to this day. So, with that, literally, like, there's a digital countdown before you every time his feed comes up. But with that, thank you, John, for your thirty years of service to our city. We, we're hopeful and we know that you will have a much-deserved retirement. And it seems like you're not gonna retire, you're going back to work in a different way. So, again, help me welcome and applaud Officer John Long for his thirty years of service to the LAPD.
First of all, I'd like to thank Joe. Like he said, we have been partners and friends for a long time. And not only did I introduce him to country music, but I don't let Joe drive either. So, I would never let him behind the wheel. But thank you, Joe. I really appreciate this. Former council members, Mr. President, it's been an awesome thirty-one years serving the people of Los Angeles. I would like to obviously thank a few people real quick, my wife and son, Kyle, Ivanya, all my friends from Public Affairs, all my old partners, Scott Shuby, partners back here, Don DiAmont. Obviously, if he's voted fifty best-looking people, I'm fifty-one, as you can tell. But big surprise, we just reconnected after having talked to a long time. But like Joe said, I do have plans outside of LAPD. But again, I thank you, guys. I appreciate you, guys. A proven drop for everybody else in LAPD, because obviously, I did my five years. But that's it. I appreciate it. Thanks again.
All right. Give him a round of applause. Thanks for your service.
So, with that, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, this entire body of John, we recognize you for your thirty-one years of service to the LAPD. We love you. God bless you.
Come on, Duncan. Can we get, who all can we get in? Everybody?
All right. Looks good.
Mr. Clerk, why don't we reconsider items four and five?
Very good, sir.
Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab you, late the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Now, let us actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab you, late the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request to send item five forthwith.
Mr. Rue, as Mr. Buscayeno is going into the back, you can move forward for your presentation.
All right, all of our volunteers are gonna be coming on up right here. Good morning, colleagues. Today is a very special day because we are celebrating the Los Angeles Public Library Volunteers. Give them all a round of applause.
Give them a round of applause. Thank you, guys. Thank you all so very much.
And with me to celebrate this day are two very special guests. Of course, our city librarian, John Zabel. And all the way here from Chicago, the president of the American Library Association, Loida Garcia Fibo. Give them both a round of applause. What's so exciting about having John at the helm of our library system and Loida at the head of ALA is that both recognize that libraries are so much more than just books. Libraries in the twenty-first century are cultural and intellectual hubs. They offer hope for new immigrants, free classes for someone changing jobs or starting a new business, and endless possibilities to anyone who walks through the doors. Libraries connect communities, they empower, and they empower individuals. Libraries are central to understanding who we are. They are the beating heart of our city's collective knowledge. They tell us where we've been and offer guidance to where we are going. And most importantly, libraries bring people together and open doors for people, no matter who they are or what they look like. And we know that strong communities start with strong community resources, and that strong libraries are only made possible by the library volunteers. These volunteers pour thousands of hours and unlimited passion into fulfilling the mission of our great libraries. Across our cities and all seventy-three branches, you will find dedicated volunteers making their library the best that it can be. Just this past weekend, I was in Los Feliz Library to celebrate its twentieth birthday. Not only did we see neighborhoods come out in full force to honor this cherished community space, but I met some of the volunteers who run the programs from architecture to computer classes and who really make this local library a thriving community resource. Volunteers are crucial to our library system. And for those of you who remember, or for those who have read about it in the library book by Susan Orlean, it was volunteers who helped save hundreds and thousands of books when our central library suffered a massive fire in nineteen eighty-six. And it was volunteers who make our library stronger every day. I am so grateful to these volunteers, as well as to our, to our librarians and library staff, including the fantastic city librarian, John Zabel, who I'll invite up to say a few words. John?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rue, and the entire city council for acknowledging and celebrating the dedication, the hard work, and the generosity of the library's nearly seven-thousand-five-hundred volunteers. Yes, there are nearly seventy-five-hundred volunteers throughout the city of L.A. volunteering at our seventy-three libraries, and we love our volunteers at the Los Angeles Public Library. And I'm so delighted that today, we're joined in celebrating these volunteers by the president of the American Library Association, our professional association, Loida Garcia Fibo. She is visiting Los Angeles as part of her Libraries Equals Strong Communities campaign, which is a national advocacy effort to highlight the value of all libraries, and we're just thrilled that she's here. While she's here, she'll be seeing firsthand how, at our seventy-three libraries, with the help, of course, of our volunteers, we're changing lives, we're providing incredibly impactful services, and we're being very innovative in our public library service. And in L.A., our Board of Library Commissioners, our mayor, our city council, and truly the people of Los Angeles understand that libraries do equal strong communities. And so, thank you so much to Loida for being here and sharing this message, not only here in Los Angeles, but really nationwide. And every day, our volunteers at LAPL play a critical role in helping have a positive impact on our city. Our volunteers come, are all ages, they come from all neighborhoods across the city, and they volunteer because they're committed to their communities and they see the valuable role that the library plays in building strong neighborhoods and frankly, helping people succeed. And our volunteers, the number of ways in which they serve us and serve Angelina is just numerous, but just to highlight some of those things, they tutor adult literacy students and help literacy students to read. They read to children and help with our children's programs. They serve thousands of free lunches. Last summer, we served over fifteen-thousand free lunches at our libraries in partnership with the L.A. Regional Food Bank, and our volunteers help with that. As docents, they're giving tours of our amazing central library. They're operating book sales in our branches to raise funds for our libraries, and they assist our amazing staff at the library with over twenty-five-thousand public programs that we do every single year. And so, thank you so much to all of you for your commitment to our library and our patrons, and a huge thank you to our volunteers. And this is such a wonderful opportunity to give them a big thank you here in city council in front of all of you, and an opportunity for you to recognize them as well. And so, I'd like to, at this point, introduce Loida Garcia Fibo, president of the American Library Association and fellow librarian.
Thank you, Los Angeles City Council, for supporting libraries. Because of you, libraries equal strong communities. Your support helps us to bring access to information, to help our communities to better their education and lifelong learning. Libraries are the great equalizer. We need academic, public, and school libraries open, fuelly funded, equipped with librarians, and with complete budgets. Libraries can't live on love alone. Your academic, public, and school libraries need your support. Libraries of all types serve as an invaluable investment in the Los Angeles community. Thank you for your support. Because of you, libraries equal strong communities.
Of course, we all know that the contributions of those seventy-five-hundred volunteers in all of our libraries is absolutely priceless. But we want to try to put a value on it, as we do each year, and so, we have a check. It is written on the Bank of Good Deeds, so I know we're in this budget season, so this is not cashable, city council members. But it is a, it is a wonderful way to show the value of our incredible volunteers and the work that they do every single year. And this is a check for four-point-seven, almost four-point-eight million dollars, an effort using industry standards to put a value on the incredible thousands of hours that our volunteers contribute. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Rue, we have a couple speakers on the queue. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few days ago, I was at the Palms Library, and we recognized an amazing staff person who had started her career with the library fifty years before and then was retiring. Our staff is amazing, but the library system couldn't function without our thousands and thousands of volunteers and the incredible number of hours that they put in. Their dedication is unbelievable. It's hard to believe that there are this many people that understand the role of libraries and how critical they are and that they make the difference. So, just as, as one person and one patron and one council member, I want to thank you all for the fact that you allow one of our most important community institutions to function, and thank you from, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Rue, for bringing these wonderful volunteers to be honored at council chambers. I think the library department is the department of good deeds, of all city departments, so we thank you for that. Just last month, I was at the Atwater Village Branch Thirty-Year Celebration. Stella Nahapetian, who's the chief librarian there, is running a wonderful program. And I am thinking back about how many hours I spent as a child in my local public library. I probably got shushed by a many volunteer back in the day, but, and I still get shushed. But what I love about libraries, at least for me as a kid, was they're always a safe haven, and you were encouraged just to pick up any book that you found interesting. And as I've said many times on this council floor, that opened a world of possibilities to me that I still live through. And so, that's, you're right, madam. Libraries are the great equalizer across all socioeconomic lines. So, thank you, Mr. Zabel, for really leading a wonderful department, and thank you to the volunteers for all of the differences you're making in children's lives who have no idea. That's really selflessness, and you're helping to build all of our communities with your volunteerism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I can, I'd like to also take this point of personal privilege to recognize the Friends of San Pedro's Public Library and the volunteers there, who are very, just they advocate for the library, very vocal and visible, and they're selling books to make a few dollars extra for the library and for the association, but thank you all for really putting, you are the heartbeat of our public library system. We thank you, we honor you, we bless you. So, Mr. Rue, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, members, and again, I want to thank all the volunteers standing behind me, as well as all the volunteers throughout the library, whether they're direct volunteers, or they're volunteering through various friends groups of the various libraries that we all represent. A big thank you, and thank you to John for quantifying the four point eight million dollars. While we can't cash it, Mr. Corcoran, I see it as a budget savings, right? It's a budget savings, so thank you so much for that. Now, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution celebrating a Los Angeles Public Library volunteers to John for all the work for all of our volunteers.
Let's give him a round of applause, thank you so much.
Actually, I have one more. One more for, finally, for our honored guest, the ALA President, Loida Garcia Fibo, who is here today, and on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution
Congratulations, and thank you again for your service to our city. With that, members, let us now take item twelve. Item twelve is now before us. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved, thank you. Ms. Rodriguez, for our final presentation of the day.
We're looking for Mr. Cedillo. Huh? Oh, okay. All right. Good morning, colleagues. I am, really, it's bitter, it's a bittersweet morning, but I'm proud to be joined by my colleagues, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, Councilwoman Weezer, and to be joined shortly by Mr. Cedillo. And we are here today to celebrate and honor our very dear friend, our Council General from Mexico, Mr. Carlos Garcia de Alba. If we could please give him a round of applause. Here in Los Angeles, where we have a population of Mexican-Americans that is second only to the population in Mexico City, it's a very proud Mexican heritage that we like to celebrate here, but what's been especially incredible for us, I think, as local elected leaders, having the relationship with our local Council General, is that we've had some very phenomenal leadership that's been appointed here through, from Mexico. But Carlos has been especially wonderful to work with, and I know for my tenure as a council member, and I know my colleagues will speak shortly about their experiences as well, it's this collaborative relationship that is instrumental to making sure that we are addressing the needs of all of our communities, particularly here in Los Angeles. And in celebrating his incredible service to the city of Los Angeles, we are also bidding a fond and heartfelt farewell because he is getting reassigned to a new post. And so, I wanted to share a little bit of background about Carlos's incredible career as a diplomat in Mexico's Ministry of Foreign Affairs, which commenced in nineteen eighty-seven and quickly reaching the rank of ambassador in two thousand and six. He has held several distinguished posts, he has served as the Council General of Mexico in Dallas, Texas, the ambassador to Mexico in Ireland, and the executive director of the Institute of Mexicans Abroad, which is in charge of coordinating the various programs that the government of Mexico has for Mexican citizens residing abroad. He was ratified by the Mexican Senate as Council General of Mexico in Los Angeles in April twenty sixteen, and his office in Los Angeles, again, represents the largest Mexican community outside of Mexico. As Council General here in Los Angeles, he has done not just an outstanding job of supporting the diverse Mexican and Mexican-American community here, but he was an incredible partner with a number of us that were hosts this year, the madrinas and madrinos of our annual celebration of El Grito, Mexican Independence, but also just being an incredible partner here culturally in Los Angeles and supporting all of the work that we do here in this city. And so, we are grateful for his service here in the city of Los Angeles. We're really sad to see him go, but we are really excited for the opportunities and his example that he will help spread across the globe in what Mexico is to, in terms of our contributions, not just to the city of Los Angeles, but around the world. And so, with that, I'd like to invite my colleague, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, for some remarks.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for leading this wonderful presentation this morning. It gives me great pride to stand shoulder to shoulder with my Latino council members, but it gives me even greater pride to know that on this horseshoe, we proudly recognize the contributions and the advances that have been made by the Latino community in the city of Los Angeles, no matter your class, background, or what you look like. Today, we recognize someone who has used his platform to advance those same ideas and to represent Mexico at its highest level possible within the city of Los Angeles and beyond. Thank you, Council General Carlos Garcia de Alba, for your years of work that you have committed to the city of Los Angeles. As the political climate in Washington becomes more challenging, we look forward to leaders like you to remind the world what the Mexican community is all about, perseverance, passion, and eagerness to make positive changes in this country. With your leadership and guidance, the consulate has strengthened its presence in our communities throughout the city of Los Angeles, and is always upholding the best interests of the Mexican people. And even though you won't be here to plan our Latino Heritage Month, you're not going to be here for El Grito this year. I know that you have left a tremendous, you know, presence here in the city of Los Angeles, and I know that the foundation that we have built to continue, building on what your legacy has left here, especially in your office of the council, we want to make sure that we recognize those efforts. We would not be able to put together such an amazing event in September if it wasn't for your office, so I want to say thank you very much for all your efforts, and thank you very much for your commitment and your dedication to the city of Los Angeles. And now, I'm going to introduce my fellow Zacatecano, Jose Weezer, from Council District fourteen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez and Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing this forward, and it's bittersweet that we say goodbye to a great Council General, Carlos Garcia de Alba, someone who has bought some passion, dedication, and commitment, and a lot of caring to this job. Back in twenty sixteen, when he was first appointed, I was heading the El Grito event, where we celebrate Mexican independence here, and it showed what type of person he is. When he was here early, walking the stage, to make sure everything was done right, he involved himself wholeheartedly, and he wanted to make sure that here in Los Angeles, as Ms. Rodriguez said, a city with the second-largest number of Mexicans, second only to Mexico City, we did it right, to show the pride that we have of being Mexican, that we show our culture, and that we show that here in Los Angeles, we are the most diverse city in the world, and we should take pride in that. And not only that, but when I said, yes, we got the right council general this time, was when Los Tigres del Norte, this is a band that plays mostly to Mexican immigrants and really takes up the cause here, and takes up the cause, when he got out there to dance, and I saw that he could dance to this music, I said, we have the right one. And I think he led the dancing that day, too, so he had the right moves, and it showed his connection to the people in the city of Los Angeles. He has been, in my opinion, one of the hardest-working Mexican council generals that we've seen in some time. He's always involved in every issue. When we had some issues with Israel, and some remarks were made about building walls, we worked collaboratively to make sure, we talked to the Jewish people in Los Angeles, he's always extended himself out to make sure that the Mexican people were being represented, and that the city of Los Angeles could be seen in the best light possible as well. So, with that, I wanted to say adios, pero no nos decimos adios, nos vamos a ver en otro tiempo, lo queremos mucho aquí in Los Angeles, y nos vemos pronto. Felicidades, amigo.
And so, colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our very dear friend, Mr. Carlos Garcia de Alba.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Dear council members of Los Angeles all, muy buenos dias. First of all, I have to say clearly and loudly, what a privilege it is for me to be here today. Thank you so much, Council Monica Rodriguez, council members, for conferring me the great honor of meeting the City Council of Los Angeles. It is always wonderful to be at this chamber, the heart of L.A., but today is even more special. As a matter of fact, in my thirty-two years and more of diplomatic career, L.A. has been, for me, the most privileged post, not just because of the size of the Mexican community, as said earlier, the largest one out of Mexico, but because of the high caliber of the officials of this incredible city. It has been almost three years as Council General of Mexico. Working, interacting with the L.A. City Council with its members has been one of the most remarkable, rewarding experience, professionally and personally speaking. I can proudly say that at some point, I met in one-on-one meetings, the fifteen legislators, members of this council. From all of you, I always got empathy, kindness, inspiration, support, and friendship. Muchas gracias. Many vivid memories of us working together came to my mind. For example, on April seventeen, I had the honor of accompanying seven Mexican state governors that visited this very seat council hall. On March two thousand eighteen, we welcomed council members Price and Cedillo in Guadalajara, my hometown, as part of the delegation of Los Angeles high-ranking officials, Consular Corp., and distinguished businesspeople and academics that visited the state of Jalisco. For three years in a row, we worked closely together, shoulder to shoulder, with council members Weezer, Cedillo, and Rodriguez, celebrating El Grito, the Mexican National Day here in this beautiful building. Last year, Councilmember O'Farrell joined us for the Mexican consulate El Grito celebration held in his district. Many of you, if not all, kindly joined us in several of the two hundred and sixty activities that took place in two thousand seventeen as part of El Año de México in Los Angeles, the Year of Mexico in L.A. It was a very successful celebration of the close, fruitful, and very positive Mexico-Los Angeles relationship. Being here this morning, how I cannot mention the permanent interest in Mexico of Mayor Eric Garcetti. He's a very good friend of my country, and if you allow me to mention it, it has been the great honor, I have the great honor of calling him a very dear friend of mine. During my tenure as Council General, Mayor Garcetti visited Mexico in an official capacity three times, the third visit just taking place in a few weeks' time. His efforts and commitment in order to strengthen the ties between Mexico and Los Angeles have been massively significant. I have to acknowledge, by the way, Mayor Garcetti's decision to create the post of Deputy Mayor for International Affairs. Since she took office in August two thousand seventeen, Ambassador Nina Hachigan has been a great deputy mayor and a brilliant asset to L.A. Ladies and gentlemen, together, we have been working along with the thin tanks Pacific Council from L.A. and Consejo Internacional de Asuntos Internacionales from Mexico City in order to create the México-Los Angeles Commission, also known as Mexla. Mexla is a very unique and official bilateral mechanism that will contribute to fostering even more the close, very productive, and deep ties of cooperation between my country and the city of angels in sectors like technology, clean energies, culture, education, tourism, social justice, and many more. As you may see, I could go on and on, talking about the many things that we did together in the last three years. There is, however, one particular thing I want to highlight, that I want to thank you all for, your strong and solid commitment to the Los Angeles-Mexico ties, to the Mexican and Mexican-American community living in this city. Thank you. Thank you for understanding that Mexico is a close, reliable friend, a strategic partner, and a key ally. Thank you for knowing that Mexico and the Mexican diaspora in the United States, in Los Angeles, are part of the solution, not of the problem, that we are here to add, not subtract. We are here even to multiply, never to divide. Together, Mexico and Los Angeles have been able to build many and so fruitful bridges, trade, tourism, security, education, arts, science, sports, gastronomy, you name it. We have been able to build a very dynamic, holistic, strategic, mutually convenient bilateral relationship. It is true, nevertheless, that we all face huge challenges and obstacles, but we have to keep working hard and being determined to strengthen our ties. It is for the good of our countries, for the good of both our people. Mexico and Los Angeles are totally aware of that. On this task, in working together and working hard, let me assure you, I'm totally certain that the Mexican consulate general in Los Angeles will always be a proud and committed partner of the city council. Again, I want to thank all council members so much for having me here this morning, it is a true privilege. Thank you as well to all the people who work really hard for the city of Los Angeles. Day after day, they all were so kind to me. Wherever my job will take Fiona and me, count there, please, on two true, deep friends. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We have one member on the queue, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank council members Rodriguez, excuse me, Rodriguez, Martinez, and Weezer, for bringing the ambassador here with us today. Just so excited, you know, you are a diplomat, a community activist, and a friend. And Carlos, I just have one question to ask, how come I'm the last to know? Seriously, your absence is going to be greatly missed and appreciated. I know you've only been here for three years, but it seems like it's been longer than that, it seems like you've been here forever. And I think that just underscores your ability and your desire to be inclusive and to be collaborative, and I will always be grateful for your counsel, your advice, and even a couple glasses of wine that we've had a chance to share over the years. So, we know that you're going to continue to really be a... So we know that you're going to continue to really be a bright shining star, not just for the Mexican government, but for people who do the right thing. And so we just appreciate you greatly. You've been a real strong advocate, not just for intercultural affairs, but international affairs. For that, we are grateful, and we're going to miss you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for bringing Carlos, our ambassador, here. You know, he has been, and you have been, one of the most active ambassadors, council generals that I've seen, and I've seen many, because I have the fortunate opportunity for you to also live in the district, along with many of the other council generals. And, you know, we are very sorry to see you leave. And we know you're gonna suffer in your next assignment, you know? I mean, wow, Milan, Italy, right? So, how can you, after Los Angeles, right? Don't forget us, though. Don't have too much fun over there in Italy. And you're always welcome in the city of Los Angeles. You've been such a great friend and a partner, and thank you so much for all of your service.
Thank you so much.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Señor Garcia de Alba, felicidades, y gracias por tu amistad y por todo. Thank you so much for everything and your friendship. And you know what, Corrin? I've also shared some glasses of wine with this gentleman, maybe even some tequila. But you've just been terrific as a partner for all the things that we find mutually worthwhile. And I also have to say, I think that we bonded over some commonalities. I think we bonded over so much in common that the Irish have with the Mexicans, and so much that we have in common indigenous, with indigenous people here and in Mexico. So I do consider you a friend, and I'm very sorry to see you going to Milan. That means we'll have to postpone our Mexico City trip, but we'll get that rescheduled. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms.
And thank you.
Thank you. I, too, as they say, want to join the choir. Carlos, this is truly a tremendous loss to the city's Consular Corps. You have represented the Mexican government with such grace, conviction, and pride. And I demand, in preparation for your next tour in Italy, I demand una buena fortuna. Gracias mil por tu servicio para nuestra ciudad. Good luck. We love you. God bless. Let's give another round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Carlos Garcia de Alba, thank you for your service. Thank you.
So, colleagues, very quickly, I actually do want to extend a, I know Mr. Cedillo, if you wanted to join us, and congratulating him very quickly before we, I wouldn't want to deny you that opportunity.
Very quickly. This is great. I came in at the end of the movie and asked everybody, what's going on? My wife would be, shh. So, colleagues, you know Carlos de Alba has a PhD in sociology, and I have a bachelor's in sociology, which means that both of us are trained in the art of observation. And Mr. de Alba is a man of the world, a man who, a real Renaissance man, and a man who has a great empathy for all people, and a great and appropriate partisanship for all Mexicans. And he is really special. And so it's a great loss for the city, it's a great loss for the state, and it's a great loss, actually, for our nation that he will be leaving us, because he is such a clear, sound, and articulate voice at this time, at a time where we are seeing the vilification of all things Mexican, Mexican-American, Latino, the focus on the border. There is a voice here in Los Angeles that is thoughtful, that is considerate, and that is within the global community. And so it's a great loss for all of us. He is a personal friend, a dear friend. Him and his wife are really special people, and all of you who know them know that what I say is the truth. And so I will miss him dearly. But, Mr. President, Mr. Buscaino, I look forward to you and I leading the delegation. If it has to be two, so be it, to go visit in Italy. Grazie. Gracias, don Carlos.
Alguiri, alguiri. Felicidades.
What does that mean? Can you translate? Can you translate with your fancy Italian?
Congratulations. Carlos, thank you for your service. We're going to miss you. Okay, let's turn to general public comment. Okay, Zach, good morning. You're welcome.
Good morning, Councilman Buscaino. Thank you so much to the group for allowing us to be here today. My name is Zach Strasters. I'm with the ARMS organization here today to just talk a little bit about energy careers. California's got a rich history of energy careers, and so we want to make sure that we're continuously keeping it on the minds of the council in each district, the importance of supporting careers in energy. This is a rapidly changing industry, but it's really important that we understand that a large segment of the economy, a certain percentage, and up to about 300,000 jobs in the state of California have to do with energy production, particularly oil and gas. So as we move forward, as hearings take place, as different organizations come forward to put their stamp of approval on the future of energy production in California, in particular in Los Angeles County, we want to make sure that this council always continues to see that as a promising industry for the future. It's not antiquated, it's ready for new, young workers, and we just thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you for your advocacy and presence here. Johnny Padilla?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
The oil industry offers economic opportunity for many who might otherwise have limited professional options. Workers who do not have a college degree have a hard time competing in today's economy, but this industry offers living wage jobs for those without a higher education degree. More than seven in 10 oil industry workers have no college degree. These are workers who would otherwise struggle to find a job that can meet basic needs. We therefore urge you to consider the economic consequence, I'm sorry, consequences of the proposed buffer zone around oil operations. Please fight to keep these career options open for many of our community members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Arero, followed by Jamie Hall.
Hello.
Good morning.
It's an honor to be here. My name is Zach Arero, and I'm with ARMS. Most people don't recognize that L.A. was developed on an oil field. As leaders in the industry, the local producers here offer good and safe jobs and have the strictest safety standards in the nation. Allowing production to continue in L.A. is essential for the local economy, and we would urge you to look at the economic impacts that would result from making changes to the codes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good morning. My name is Jamie Hall. I'm the president of the Laurel Canyon Association and the Laurel Canyon Land Trust, an organization dedicated to the acquisition and preservation of natural open space in the Santa Monica Mountains. I'm sure you've heard about the UN report that came out, the Biodiversity and Ecosystem Services Report, which estimates that 1 million animals could become extinct in the future years. This loss is a direct result of human activity and constitutes a direct threat to human well-being in all regions of the world. According to the report, the number-one culprit is changes in land use. That means development. So I'm here today to thank you for potentially funding a Wildlife Corridor Ordinance pilot program. This is extremely important. If L.A. wants to make a change to this direct threat to human activity, we need to fund this pilot program. And I would respectfully ask that you re-rank and elevate this to a number-one on your priority list. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker for general public comment, Christina Marsh, please come forward. Christina Marsh here. Okay, seeing none, let's now close general public comment. So with this, colleagues, we need to consider items two and three. We can...
Mr. President, we should first reconsider both matters, then they'll be before you.
Let us now reconsider items two and three. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's take item number two. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd move that we approve the finding of public convenience or necessity for the application indicated in item number two on the agenda.
I'll second that. So with that, let us now, on item two, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item two is approved as amended. Okay, we will recess shortly until we can bring back Ms. Rodriguez to the chambers for item number three. So with that, Mr. Krikorian, if you want to lead this on item number three. I hear, here she is. Oh.
I yield to Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, so with that, Ms. Rodriguez...
We're going to move to confirm, please.
Fantastic. So I'll second. With that, item number three, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item three is approved as amended. Thank you. What's now before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Adjourning motions? Let us rise for adjourning motions. On to my left, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn this council meeting in memory of a Hollywood icon, Doris Day. Many remember her as America's sweetheart or the girl next door. Before she ever appeared on the silver screen, she recorded more than 600 recordings with her iconic voice, for which she won a lifetime Grammy Achievement Award and a Legend Award from the Society of Singers. She recorded dozens of albums and saw numerous singles reach top-10 status, most notably her breakout 1947 hit sentimental journey. Her singing is what carried her career onto the big screen, famously singing "Secret Love" in 1953 and "Casey's A Siren" in 1956, for which she won Academy Awards. She starred in nearly 40 films. Her enormously popular entertainment career is evident, since she is still one of the top-ranked female box office stars of all time. And of course, she was a TV star, too. Among other things, from 1968 to '73, she hosted the sitcom The Doris Day Show. And although the Casey's A Siren singer made a name for herself with her blonde hair and wholesome on-screen persona, most notably to me, she spent decades devoting herself to the betterment of animal welfare. In fact, while starring in Alfred Hitchcock's 1956 production of The Man Who Knew Too Much while in Morocco, she insisted on better treatment of the animals on and around the set, and even helped feed emaciated animals in the surrounding community. The production had to set up a feeding station before Doris would return to the set. In 1971, she co-founded Actors and Others for Animals. Doris Day personally rescued, fostered, and found loving homes for hundreds of animals, earning her the affectionate nickname "The Dog Catcher of Beverly Hills." Recognizing the need to stop animal homelessness at its source, she founded the Doris Day Animal Foundation in 1978, a nonprofit organization that saved countless animals' lives by providing grants for spaying and neutering, as well as funding humane education in schools and helping senior citizens pay for their animal companions, food, and veterinary care. Also in 1987, she formed the Doris Day Animal League with her son Terry Melcher to lobby for humane legislation such as tax penalties for failing to spay and neuter animals. In fact, the Doris Day Animal League originated what is now known as World Spay Day in 1955, before merging their efforts with HSUS in 2007. The same year, she created a scholarship at UC Davis School of Veterinary Medicine. Founded in honor of her late son Terry Melcher, the scholarship was founded to honor outstanding veterinary students working to improve the welfare of homeless animals. And over the years, I've been proud to work on several occasions with the Doris Day Animal League, although I never personally met Doris Day. The league was represented on the West Hollywood Animal Issues Task Force in the '90s, which I established, which worked to oppose cruel animal trapping, animal testing, and other cruel practices, and to support spay-and-neuter efforts. In recognition of her work for animals, former President George W. Bush honored Day with the Medal of Freedom Award. Every major animal rights organization has posted a loving memory note of her passing, from HSUS to PETA. But I'd like to read the note from the Doris Day Animal League Facebook page. "The world has lost a light today. With heavy hearts, we share the news that Doris Day passed away peacefully this morning at her home in Carmel, California. Doris's passionate work on behalf of animals in need will not end. Doris Day Animal League is committed to continuing its work to protect animals across the country. Doris was truly a voice for the voiceless among us and one of the world's most loved and most honored women, a bright and beautiful champion for the cause of animal welfare and a dear, dear friend to us all. As you remember Doris today, give a thought to the animals she cared for so deeply."
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Am I right? Okay, seeing none, we are now adjourned. Go forth and serve the people of this great city. Thank you.